Is it worth that side room is?
We'll wait for Emily to come back. Yeah, we'll wait for her to come back. Maybe. That's true. We're waiting for you. All right, we'll get started as long as everyone's ready. Everyone's ready? Okay, we will get started. All right, welcome to Santaquin City Planning Commission Meeting. It is Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and we're getting started right at seven o'clock, plus or minus a little bit. All right, would anyone like to get us started tonight with a thought or an indication?
Yeah, I have a quote. It's by Jane Jacobs. She says, "A city is not an accident but the result of coherent and exciting forces and ideas."
Well said, I like that. Thank you. All right, would anyone like to lead us into pledge tonight? All right, thank you.
My pledge is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. So here before, as you can see, the agenda for tonight, we've got two items on the agenda, including a proposed amendment to the general plan and a plat amendment in Ellsworth Acres. So I think we'll proceed in this order unless anyone has arguments otherwise. All right, but first we'll start with the public forum. So for those of you who are here, that's your opportunity to address the planning commission about anything that's on your mind except for agenda item number one, because we've got a public hearing. So if there's comments related to agenda item number one, we'll ask you to hold those until we get to the public hearing. But for anything else, now's the time. So I'll open the public forum at seven oh two and invite any comments. All right, then we will close the public forum at seven oh two, and we will move into agenda item number one. Please, yes.
So planning commissioners, I appreciate being here to kind of go over the proposed general plan amendment regarding our water use and required. And this is a general, an amendment that was required by the state legislature back in twenty-two. They put some, put a requirement in this, all cities throughout, well, most cities, anything over five hundred people was required to update their general plan, included water use and conservation element in their plants. And this is a draft for that. We've coordinated with our water modeling company, Hassan Allen Loos, to help generate this and coordinate with them on there. So over the, essentially, this general plan is really very similar to what we've already had in our, in our current city code. Over the last couple of years, we've worked fairly closely with the state and also the kind of the regions within the state that kind of defines water use areas. And for Santaquin City, just for your information, Santaquin City is included in the Provo River area that's been identified. So yes, we may be further south than the Provo River and don't have anything to do with water wise up there. We're still within that, that range. So, but the, the, basically, this water use element takes what we've already kind of implemented already within the city to help make sure we are able to conserve our water and our water usage. Our currently, our water rights and water sources that we have, we have water, our culinary water is pretty robust. We have the water rights to be able to do it, be able to use all those water rights. We're still not built out yet. We tell a while to go in there. But our pressurized irrigation, that's one that's a little bit further behind. There are things that we as a city are doing to, to make sure that we keep that up. But right now, water use wise and for, that we'll need for growth, the city's doing pretty good. We're in a pretty good standing. So just kind of a, an FYI on there. Some kind of high level points I'll, I'll share with you on the proposed general plan amendment. One, it goes and it kind of gives our current water usage that we're, we're using that's been over the last ten years, that's been, been shown in there, actually about twelve years, and goes back to twenty thirteen. It shows kind of a historical use of water that we've had in there. You've seen it kind of bumped up and down. You'll see a big spike that occurred in recent years, and that's due to the, the grant that we got from the state to replace all of our old pressurized irrigation water meters that were not measuring appropriately. There's a lot of water that was not recorded or reported as a part of that. So that's why there's a significant bump in, in the last couple of years for water use. And so kind of on there, we've, as you say, roll down through it. I'm probably going to focus more on some, some methods that we're currently doing, and it's listed in this document. Landscaping efficiencies, back in, as I mentioned, a couple of years ago, the city council did approve water use or water guidelines and require, and put those in place to allow residents to actually qualify for reimbursements to, through the Central Utah Water District. To be, and so those included maximum or a minimum turf width of eight feet. Because if you're any narrower than that, your sprinklers are gonna water whatevers, doesn't need to be watered. Other elements include a maximum amount of landscaping required in a, on a residential lot, those type of, that was included. Smart irrigation controllers, again, that's, some of the, these things are allowed for refunds by our residents of the city to be able to use for that. Couple other things is, another method is kind of HOA landscaping requirements. It allow, this doesn't necessarily, Santaquin City currently doesn't have a lot of this restriction in place with any of the HOAs that are within town. We don't have a whole lot of them. We do have a couple. Some HOAs require more turf, which is fine, they can. The city doesn't say, can, they can work with the city to minimize that. So we're not, the irrigation uses up most of your water as part of that. Kind of to give you an idea, a home, typical home will use about three, two-thirds of an acre foot of water. And an acre foot, basically, you have an acre of land, you can fill a, a water to a depth of one foot on there. So that's kind of gives you an idea how much that would be. And to irrigate turf, it's four acre feet per acre is, is kind of what they call the duty rate for, for long, for long. Very similar to what alfalfa would be. To say not to take up too much more time, there's a couple of future items on there, future planning recommendations. On the second to last sheet there, water conservation policies that come into play. That includes like making sure we're following the building code of, of low flow faucets. Anywhere from that to making sure that, or potentially, let's say it all depends on funding. Where you could do potential rebates for, for landscaping, some cities have kind of done a flip your strip type thing. Not saying that we need to do that, that's just one of the potential options that you could go through there. Again, when it comes to landscaping within public streets, some developments and some developers, as they're going to put in, instead of putting turf in the planner boxes, they put trees. A good example of that is up by, or Apple Valley Elementary, the homes that are on the south side of that, of seven seventy north. They put cobble and they put trees there. It was a great example of, of a way you can help save water on there, reduce those that produce that water demand. Those are basically kind of real high level, just touch on those a little quick on there. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you guys had as you reviewed the document in regards to that.
All right, thanks, John. Appreciate that. Commissioners, any question? Well, any questions while we've got John up here?
Okay, great.
All right, thanks. We'll think about it for a minute. We might, we might bring you back up. All right, let's, uh, let's move into the public hearing now on this agenda item. I will open the public hearing at seven ten and invite any comments. Okay, if there's no comments, then we'll close the public hearing at seven ten. All right, there you go, commissioners. What questions do you have for John? I thought the presentation looked great. It was really interesting to see the graphs of usage over time and compare culinary and PI. So, yeah, this is a proposed amendment to the general plan, which requires a recommendation from the planning commission for the city council. So that's where we're headed. But do we need to have any discussion on this before we move forward? Please?
I just have a real quick question for the gentleman there. You mentioned that the irrigation water is not up to go, but the drinking water is, I mean, what, what's that?
So it's our water rights. So our water rights wise, we've got adequate water rights to, for our, our theoretical build out is, is kind of the, we look in our general plan to say, okay, in forty years down the line, what's the city's population going to be? And based off our current usage of water, we say, okay, this is how much additional water we're going to need. Our water rights, we have the capacity to really get close to meeting that, that requirement when it comes to culinary water drinking. Now, having the water rights means, yes, we can draw the water. But having the physical capability of delivering that water to the residents, that's one thing that as we grow, those projects come online to where we have to install, construct new wells, new pump houses, new storage tanks, et cetera, as development occurs to do those things. So a lot of developments do require tanks, and right now, that's a lot, what's on a lot of developers' minds is they go build here in Santaquin.
I have one more question then. The sources of our culinary water, is it just from one source or we have several sources?
We have several sort, well, we have several sources. We've got three wells that we can draw on for our culinary water usage that we actually have in, in service now. We also have a spring that comes out of Santaquin Canyon, and that's really where the baseline of our water source comes from, is from that, from our canyon springs. And we do supplement during the, during the summer with our wells to provide our culinary water. Pressurized irrigation comes from multiple sources as well. Typically, we do have sources that, through the Summit Creek Irrigation Company. We have, we're able to get water out of, out of their system and put into ours. We also have a well that can do that, but we also get, we use our treated effluent out of our, the water reclamation facility as part of that. Yep, and this next year, we're actually going to be able to hook up to the ULS, the Utah Lake System Pipeline, that's been going through the town the last two years. That will be, we're able to start taking delivery of that water next year as, as that comes online. Yep.
Well, you're talking about that, how much of the additional capacity needed does that pipeline address, or is it already figured into the shortfall that was?
It, it does, it does act, it does add to our, our shortfall a little bit. We get just a little over nine hundred acre feet that we'll be able to take out of that, that pipeline. And that will be a big help as we're, as we grow and to be able to make that connection to there.
All right.
Explain allocation based tiered pricing models.
What is that?
Can you explain allocation based tiered pricing models?
Your tiered rate structures?
Yeah, so basically, tiered rate structure, we do have a form of that currently in our, in our meter rates. And so basically, use up a certain, water will cost a certain amount over, you know, the first, I can't remember our, our tiers right off the top of my head. But you go, you know, or first ten thousand gallons you use, there's a rate. The next ten thousand gallons, another rate. Next ten thousand as you go up. And allocation can be based on the usage of whether it's residential, whether it's industrial, commercial, institutional.
There's a, there's a note here that says, "Allocating based tiered pricing models recommended. Santaquin is exploring pricing structures that base water rates on lot size and expected usage following models adopted in cities like Saratoga Springs." I don't mind it charging you for what you use and charging a little more for more usage. But if it's just a flat out, hey, your lot's bigger than my lot, so you're going to pay more for water, that doesn't make sense to me.
No, and again, that's just a model that we'd look at, and we're not, Saratoga Springs was indicated in, in the draft on there. It actually is multiple cities that we've, we've looked at, and we've made that correction and said this is a draft on there.
Well, it, it says recommended, and so, you know, I can name a few cities off the top of my head that I really would not want to follow in their footsteps. And I think that this is not right. This doesn't treat people fairly.
Yeah, every, so, yep, and it is a recommendation. Say with general plans, you look at it and say, okay, well, as we start to go through this, everything's got to be looked at to make sure that we're able to provide the level of services that we have. And so, and we're not the only cities that's done this. All those other cities have done this before, and so we do look at what other, other cities have done. That doesn't mean we always do what other cities have done, but we do take that so we have a broad way and so we can have the best way to implement it.
I'm just thinking of, let's say, we've got a, a citizen in the city that has, you know, a third of an acre that they're, actually have their house on, and they've got landscaped. And then they've got seven tenths of an acre that they're using for a pasture. And then we up their water costs because they have an acre sized lot. That doesn't make sense to me.
And it all depends on how they irrigate it. If, if they have a pasture and they want to irrigate the pasture, then that's, that's one where.
Well, then, then they would use, they would use more water and be charged accordingly. But if it's based on just the size of their lot, I don't think that's correct.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That does.
Okay.
Was that a correct rate of the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That the, the rate would increase just based on the size of the lot, not on usage?
Well, yes, again, that's part of the recommendation. That's how that reads. So, but yeah, that's good, that's good feedback. We'll make sure we, we look at potential rewording of that, that section. That's why we do this, so.
Are you talking about base rates there or usage rates? Adjusted usage rates or adjusted base rates?
Yes.
Both?
Both.
Because where, where I work, we, we adjust base rates based on meter size, which bigger lots have bigger meters. And the, the usage rates are the same, but that they obviously use more water, so they move into those tougher, upper tiers quicker.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so every city does a little bit differently?
Yeah, I don't mind that. If you're going to use more water and you have, and you pay a little more.
Even if you request a two inch meter over a three quarter inch meter, you're going to pay a higher base rate whether you use more water or not. Because you have the ability to take that much war, more water, the service connection costs more and all that stuff.
Yeah, we're in that, we're in that same boat. We do the same thing.
The maintenance of that connection basically is more expensive.
And maybe that's a point of feedback is based on meter size, right, rather than lot size?
And I think that's what the intention is here, but.
It just needs to be clarified a little better so that it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I agree, if he's got a two acre lot, but you're not using any more water, why should you pay more?
Right. That's my thought.
Yep. Okay, good feedback. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, what else? If not, is anyone ready to make a recommendation through a motion?
You don't want me to do it.
Commissioner Wood, I'll make, I'll make a positive.
You ready?
Yes. Okay. I'll make a, a positive recommendation, planning, or the, I'll make a recommendation of planning commission for deposit recommendation to the city council for the general plan, water use and conservation element.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hoffman. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Romero. Any further discussion?
I'll hold my thoughts.
Okay, I think we've discussed it, but if you wanted to provide my feedback that that's included as part of the motion, you could.
I'll, I'll, I would follow up with our draft on there to get that.
Yeah, I do want to add, I think I want to add a red line and not say turf, but say sod. Just because we aren't stating if it's real turf or artificial turf. And so I think that could get confusing. I think, I don't know. That's my thoughts on it, because I'd say turf in minimal areas. To me, when I would add, I would add turf in minimal water areas.
So, so live plant? You want to say that it's a live plant somewhere in there?
That's, I mean, I just want to redline those. I was just going to address that later, but as I was thinking about it more, I, I would rather say sod.
In the motion?
Yeah. So we need to do the red lines that Mike was saying, as well as just adjusting to real turf or sod and not artificial turf. Unless we allow artificial, do we allow that in the, like zero scapeing or any of our landscaping?
I don't really answer that. I don't have the answer to that either.
So that's why I didn't want to state artificial, but let's just say real sod, real turf.
Any other discussion on the motion? So we have a couple of discussion points. Would you like to amend your motion?
Do you want to amend that motion?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll amend Commissioner Hoffman's motion and do a positive recommendation with the red lines that we correct the usage based on base and the base percentage as well as usage of water. And to correct red lines of turf to be real turf or sod and not artificial turf.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Do we have a second?
Also.
Yes, okay. No, you're good. Motion by Commissioner Nixon, second by Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion on the amended motion? All right, let's vote. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moak?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation as discussed and amended to the city council, and it is unanimous. All right, thanks, everyone. Okay, we can move on now to agenda item number two. This is the Ellsworth, Ellsworth Acre Plat Amendment.
Okay, Craig Ellsworth, he's here in the audience with us. He owns parcel forty-eight, one ninety-six, zero, zero, one, which is part of the Oak Ridge Estates subdivision and parcel forty-eight, three, four, four, zero, zero, three, six, which is in the Oakview Hills subdivision. It's both R ten and R twelve. If you were to combine the lots, it would be a little over one acre. This is where they're located. They're both corner lots. And then there's the flats. And he just wants to combine them into one. There's no maximum size requirement for the R ten and R twelve, so it would meet the requirement of both zones. And engineering didn't find any problems with that.
All right, thanks, Aspen. Okay, Mr. Ellsworth, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I can't, unless there's specific questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. I do have a question, I think, for Aspen. So I think what I read is they want to combine the lots so that they can do ADU. Is that correct? Where did I read that?
I don't know if it's necessarily an ADU, but he did want to build an accessory structure on his property.
Structure, okay, I misread it as a, and, but I guess the question is the same. Is, is the purpose of combining the lots so that the accessory structure can be built?
You can't put an accessory structure on a lot without a dwelling unit on.
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you. Would you step up to the microphone for us? Thanks. We just have to get you on the recording.
Yeah, so that is my purpose, so I can build that structure. If there's a, another process for me to put that structure on through, through some exception basis, I'm happy to discuss that. But short that, this is my option to be able to build that structure.
Right, yeah, I'm not aware of any, any, yeah, any way to do it without a dwelling unit there. I think that's what the code specifies, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, commissioners, what are your thoughts, questions, concerns?
I just wondered what zone, will this now go into the R ten zone?
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah.
That actually was my question, but I, yeah, aborted it after we had that discussion, but it's, it's a good question. How would the combined lot be treated as far as zoning?
You can't split zoning on a lot, correct?
Correct.
So.
So would it be R ten or R twelve?
It'd be R ten because the, the current home is on R ten.
But combining a lot doesn't modify the zoning map. So is there an additional process that would need to happen here?
I will need to look into that further.
You do, because you can't have split zoning on a lot. So you'll have to amend the zoning map as well.
Unless are we just doing a lot line change?
Well, no, we can't just do like a simple boundary. It has to be a full plat amendment. So we can amend the zoning map. Let's have to go through that.
Zone change, it has to go through city council.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sorry, in a past life, I was, had to deal with planning as well. It, there is a, a potential that you can have a lot that does span two zones. We do have that in a couple of spots within, within the, within the city, specifically along Main Street. There's a couple of spots there where we go Main Street business, then we have Main Street residential, and there are lots that do span that. Now, does it make it cleaner and stuff to have to go through a zone change? It'd probably be best to do that. But a lot can span, can be split zoning as a part of that. But I do, I think it'd make it cleaner and in the future for the, the property owner, whether it's him or someone in the future, if they wanted to go and subdivide that lot again, then they would, it would kind of be cleaner that way. So it is possible. Is it a good thing to do? Not necessarily, but it is, it is possible for a zone to.
Our code doesn't allow that?
I believe so, but again, Aspen would probably have to speak more of that than, than I have.
Do you happen to know if the zoning was changed before the lots were subdivided, or if it was changed after the fact?
It would have been changed with the development that occurred. So there's multiple developments that have happened up in this area. So it would have happened, most of these areas are, there's a PUD associated with them. And so there'd be a, that's where it was probably instigated is during that PUD development, the subdivision development.
Okay. And a PUD with a development agreement is almost like a code amendment, right? I mean, it's, it's considered part of the code.
It, it does become, there's some elements in there that allows them to have smaller lots than what the base zone requires. And so, and they can do that with additional amenities to be able to get the smaller lot size on there. So it doesn't, it, it becomes a overlay, essentially, for lack of a better term, over that zone to get it. But most of these areas, I think that the dark yellow is shown there, I think that is actually defined as a R ten PUD.
Right.
So in relationship to that. And if it, if it was needed to modify the zone, that, that's all built out. And so the development agreement is still in play, but it could, that wouldn't necessarily hold a zone change, I don't believe. Again, but all those need to be, make sure we're verified with, with Aspen and the review on that.
Okay, so I kind of feel like maybe we don't have all the information we need at this point to make a decision on this. The, the planning commission would be the land use authority, so we would be deciding tonight, but I'm not sure we have a clear answer on whether or not it would require a zone change first or as part of. So in my opinion, it would be appropriate to table this agenda item while we figure out what the appropriate path forward is. Does anyone have any objections? Or alternate proposals?
I'm looking real quick, see if I can find it.
If you can find it, that'd be fantastic.
I think it's, I think it's okay because it still meets what he wants to do in either zone. I was just curious which zone it would be in.
Yeah.
And I, I understand the Main Street commercial examples, because we have quite a, quite a few of those. So I think it's still okay to go forward. I was just curious on which zone. So I think it's still okay to go forward, I was just curious on which zone.
Yeah, I have no problem with combining the lots.
Both now, yeah, combine the lots still, and then. See if it's a problem that they're in different zones, but.
I do think we need to understand if it's allowed to subdivide on a zone boundary without changing the zoning before we allow it.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I can't, I can't quickly find anything, I don't see anything that says they can't do it. But, yeah, may takes more in depth, but I don't see a problem with this, this, this. Combining the, the lots into one, we just need to get the zoning figured out, so it's not a problem for you in the future. And whichever, I think they could go either way in R twelve or R ten.
Yeah.
If I may.
Please.
It, it seems there's an opportunity for addressing the future concerns with any subsequent. Request for subdividing that parcel after we combine it into the single plat, so I would, I would recommend or suggest that. That. Opportunity exists with the planning commission in any future request to subdivide that lot by another owner.
I'm not sure I'm following, could you restate, sorry?
Well, I think what I heard was, was a concern about what would happen with future use of the lot.
That, that was one concern.
And to address that concern, I would suggest that the planning commission has the opportunity to address that with any future request to subdivide.
That's true, a future request to subdivide would come before the planning commission, so that's a fair point. Yeah.
That was my point, thank you.
Any concerns from your end, Mr. Ellsworth, if we were to table this for, until our next meeting?
Just, just one of expediency for me, so if we could, if we could address whatever the open issues are. Relatively quickly, that would allow me to proceed with the plans that I'm trying to put together.
Two weeks, is two weeks going to be too much time?
I'll work with whatever it is.
Okay, thank you.
So, Aspen?
Yeah.
Want to pull up ten twenty oh six?
What I don't want to do is basically grant the combining and then find out later that we violated a split zoning, you know, rule of the code somewhere. It does say that, but it also says that it would require a zoning action and effective notice.
Yeah, but he's not changing the zone, he's leaving him the same. All he's doing is, is a boundary line adjustment within the existing zone, so, I think you're probably good, actually, I was, I was searching for split zoning, not partial rezoning. Yeah, that's good, fine, John.
The setbacks are the same in the R ten and R twelve as well, if that.
But if there's no zone change, it really doesn't matter, so, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Everyone feel good about that?
Yep, that explains it.
I would, um, I would suggest that a motion should cite that, that part of the code as essentially a finding for.
Yeah.
Why it would be okay to move forward with a lot combining across a zone boundary, if that makes sense. Okay. Well, we've discussed it, I don't think anyone is raising any concerns about the combining of the lot itself. So, if we're ready, would anyone like to make a motion?
Commissioner Wood, I'll make a motion to approve the plat amendment for Ellsworth Acres based on. Santaquin City Municipal Code ten dot twenty dot oh six oh. Section. D. Under partial rezoning, which allows this action.
Alright, thank you, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hoffman, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Romero, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote, Commissioner Moke?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? Yes. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the plat amendment is approved and it's unanimous. Alright, thank you, everyone, good discussion, we've learned a couple of things tonight, so that's good. Alright, let's move on now to agenda item number three. We need to approve the minutes from our last meeting on August twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five. Any discussion on those minutes before we proceed? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion that we accept the Santaquin City Planning Commission minutes of August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Romero, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moke, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved and it's unanimous. Alright, Aspen, anything else we need to work through tonight?
Not tonight, next planning commission will probably be looking at the Apple Grove condos that were approved. Once red lines are all addressed in DRC this morning. And then the Oaks Dance Studio has submitted another application for a conditional use and major home occupation.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Alright, commissioners, anything we need to talk about?
In our packet, what's the photo? Under the meeting minutes approval?
From the Oaks. Yeah, that's from the Oaks Dance application last time.
Alright, if there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty seven.